Good morning. Thank you for joining us this early Saturday morning. We're so thrilled to have you and we appreciate such a great turnout. I'd like to thank you all for coming so early and getting up on your Saturday morning and giving it to such an important cause for government affairs. I'd like to say a special thank you to some people in the room. First of all, Ken Mellon with the City of Lansing, thank you so much.[21.68][21.68][applause] Also to our Government Affairs Committee, if you're on our Government Affairs Committee with the Chamber of Commerce, can you just please stand up for one moment and be recognized? Thank you so much for your effort.[35.61][35.61][applause] Also, I'd like to thank our breakfast sponsor this morning and our moderator, Mr. Ted Davis.[45.19][45.19][applause] Ways to provide you services provided all of our breakfasts this morning, so we're pleased to have that. But food always gets everyone out in the morning. Also, I would like to let you know that our recording will be available in a few days. We'll put it out on YouTube. We'll have a link to that with our Chamber website and we'll also send out that link in an email, so if you want to show this to anyone or share it, you'll be able to do so. Okay? Also, I would like to remind you to please stay up with all of our Chamber information and events there on our website. We send them out through emails. If you feel like you're getting too many emails, you can unsubscribe to some of them. Like if you don't want to get our Working Wednesdays, or if you don't want to get events, you can choose what you want now, so that's an option. You can also check our calendar. Our calendar is up to date and we encourage you to get out and support the businesses. We've got lots and lots of ribbon cuttings going on, and so all of our local businesses would really love your support as well as recognition at our socials and stuff like that. So if you don't know who I am, my name is Jenny Anderson. I am the new Chamber President and CEO as of July, so I'm excited to be here and meet you and see all your faces. So please take a moment to come and introduce yourself to me. I'd love to meet you or have a cup of coffee or get down and see what you've got opinions and stuff going on in the community. I'd love to know. Also, we do have a Government Affairs Survey that we are constantly requesting feedback from businesses, so this is your chamber and we would love to hear what businesses find important and we take it with our Government Affairs Committee to our constituents and this is important for us to tell them what we need from them, and that's the whole point of a Government Affairs Committee. So I'd also like to recognize our current legislators and board members holding positions in the room, so thank you all for coming. Senator Tymon from District 5.[156.44][156.44][applause] Sorry, I should have said to hold your applause.[163.51][163.51][laughter] But Senator, you get the first applause. Tim Johnson from the 38th District of the Kansas House of Representatives.[171.31][171.31][applause] We might as well call it that.[175.12][175.12][laughter] We've got Terry Lowe's Mashburn with the Ristor of Deeds.[180.73][180.73][applause] Jeff Culbertson with the 1st District of Leavenworth County.[187.01][187.01][applause] Mike Stephen with District 5 of Leavenworth County.[192.73][192.73][applause] And then Vanessa Reed with Leavenworth School Board.[198.45][198.45][applause] So with that, I'm going to hand this over. I'm sure you're ready to get on.
Mike Powell.
Did I miss someone?
Mike Powell.
Mike Powell, I'm so sorry, Mike.
Oh, that's all right.
Mike, yes. Oh, you did. I've been late. I'm so sorry, Mr. Stephen. He's with the Leavenworth School Board as well, so. And did I miss someone else?
Mike Carney.
Mike Carney. What? I'm so sorry. Did you keep going on me too? I'm so sorry.
I got it.[226.73][226.73][laughter]
Oh, you got a ruler, great, great. Uh-oh. Okay, welcome. Pass this off to Mr. Davis, who's going to get us going and get this on the road. So thank you all. I apologize for the delay, and thank you.[238.01][238.01][applause]
Thank you, Jenny. Appreciate that. All right, well, welcome, and we're excited that you're here today and get out of the way of this.[247.73][247.73][laughter] The rules of the game, we're going to give each, first of all, there's three waves to this. We're going to start off with the State Board of Education. Those two candidates will have five minutes to make their opening statement, then we'll ask questions. I've got a couple of questions, and we'll open it up to the floor. The candidates will have two minutes to answer the questions. We should go about a half hour or so for the first round, which is the State Board of Education. The second round is the County Commission. Just have two of them here today. Again, five-minute opening comments, two minutes to respond to our questions, and then the third wave will be for the state representative, of which we have three candidates here today. Again, five-minute opening, two minutes for each round, for each question. When we get to the questions, I've got some questions to ask on behalf of the Government Affairs Committee, and then we'll open it up to the floor. You can ask questions of the candidate, either directly to a candidate or to both candidates. Please say however you want to be answered. Please be direct about your question. This is a candidate forum. It's not a debate. Not a debate between the candidates, not a debate between us as voters and the candidates. So if you have a question, get to the question. Give you about a sentence to give an opinion, and then ask the question. So please be concise in leading up to that. Also, the timer is going to be Linda Johnson here. She also asked me to remind you that there is some literature out here. Where's the literature for the lead woman voters? Linda, where's that literature from?
No, it's back on table.
Back on the table.
Is it all the candidates listed and also identifies the two amendments that will be on your ballot? It does not have a list of the 17 judges that will be on your ballot as well.
All right, so can I have two candidates for the State Board of Education? You want us here?
You stay down here. Yep.
What do you want us to, what do you want?
How about up here? It's best for the frame.
Right here.
Yep, those two.
Assuming that somebody's not working.
Too broken already.
Yep.
We won't be chasing until they're on the stage. Move back so far. I'm moving that back so.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. By the way, we've got obviously Jeff Howard, did I say it there?
Howard, yes.
Howard. Running for the State Board of Education, and Tom Schmidt is representing Danny Zack, who is out of town. So he's going to be spanking for him. All right, let's give you the question. First question. Let me assert that a healthy community.
Don't they get five-minute introductions?
Oh, yes, thank you so much.
Anytime.
We've got my own one.
Exactly.
So busy trying to get this thing moving forward.
Yeah, but I'm trying to time it.
All right. So how would you start it up?
Good morning. I'm Jeff Howard. I'm running for the State Board of Education. Two things first. Since I'm sitting up here, you can see I'm wearing ankle bracelets. Rest assured, they are not trackers. I'm not out of role this time. I've got, this time, I've got neuropathy. My feet are numb. These are experimental sensors that are tied to sensors of my shoes that tell me where my feet are so I don't fall going up and down the stairs.
Mike.
Mike?
Mike.
It's not on?
Nope.
I can hear myself.
I got it, I got it.
All right, I can hear myself.[495.02][495.02][laughter] All right, okay, is that better?
Yeah.
All right, I can still hear myself.[501.31][501.31][laughter] Okay, second, to the educators out there, I owe you an apology. Last week at the forum, I was asked a question about parents as teachers. Those of you who know me know I have some short-term memory problems. It's one of the privileges of wearing combat bullets for 20 years, and I knew the answer, I knew the program, but I spaced it out, and rather than turning to the stage manager and saying, "Mike, please, I'm refreshing my memory," I tried to wing it and I went off in right field and I was wrong. I should have just asked a question from who asked, who wrote the question. You please refresh my memory, and I could have given a correct answer, but I was wrong to do that. It was insulting to the educators there involved in that program, and for that I apologize. I actually do have a pamphlet here with me, and as you see, I normally carry a notebook so I can write stuff down because I know it's one of the things I have to work with. But I made that mistake. I will not make that mistake again. I will make other mistakes, and there'll be questions I don't know the answers to, but when I don't know the answers, I will ask. Simple as that. I am a progressive educator. I believe in supporting students, educators, and education. And basically, I believe that every student, regardless of where they fall in the diversity rainbow, deserves an equal opportunity for a complete, well-rounded education in all aspects of education. They need to be prepared for, after graduation, to be successful in today's community and tomorrow's community. And we've got to remember, we can't be teaching them about ramblers and edzels when they're living in a world populated by Prius and Teslas. Technology is advancing way too fast. We need STEM classes. We need social-emotional learning classes to prepare them how to handle themselves in conflict resolution, both in minor issues, and I'm a little bit angry, and in major issues. Too many students, you hear every week about another school shooting. We need to help students by educating them properly. And to do this requires a group effort. Parents, grandparents, and teachers working together and not against each other with a common goal for success to the students. Thank you.[638.25][638.25][applause]
My name is Tom Schmidt. I am not Danny Zack.[647.62][647.62][laughter] But I will explain Danny Zack just a little bit, but first, myself. I'm married. A beautiful woman over there, 52 years, Jeanne Schmidt.[660.12][660.12][applause] We have raised three kids. We have enjoyed watching the raising of 13 grandchildren, four of whom are already negotiated at secondary schools and are out there, one in the Air Force, one in Hillsdale College, one at Northern Arizona University, and one who's graduating next month from Vet Tech School in Colorado, in Denver. So we are people that are about education, have always been about education, have been blessed by education in our own lives, is where we've reached that. Our kids have gone to school all over the world since we were in the military, but they finished their schooling right here in Leavenworth, in the schools in Fort Leavenworth and the city of Leavenworth. So we're vitally interested in this sort of thing. Now, I am a strong supporter, a close friend, and very compatible on this issue with Danny Zack, and I am his treasurer for his campaign. He is out right now in Manhattan, I guess it's a stop at Perry First, meeting with parents, with citizens, with school board members, and with teachers, as he's been all through this whole campaign and will until the end of the campaign. But I want to tell you a little bit about Danny and why I am a supporter, why I accepted his call reluctantly, I would have to say, to be his treasurer, and why I participate with him and agree with him. Danny Alsum is a lifelong, born, bred, raised, and raised kids in Leavenworth, in the Leavenworth school system, himself, his children, and many grandchildren. He was on the school board for 16 years, very active on the school board. He has, interest has been piqued in the last several years, as it has in many people in the country, about education and where we are on public education. And so he has been going to school board meetings. He encouraged me. I go on with him. We have made observations, a lot of that through his experience and my experience as an educator as well, and we're startled. In fact, we're very concerned. And so we attend local school board meetings here, school board meetings in other districts, and we continue to gather information. Danny would tell you that he read a book called, "We Shall Not Be Silent." Several of us read that in our Bible study group that we go to, and we discovered that silence has been a problem about many things in our country, in particular, education, and now it's time to voice an opinion and get involved. Parents should be more involved. And that prompted him to get more involved, do more study, and bring me along in that study, and it's what's prompting him on this campaign. In that book, we just realized that we are failing on kids. Their education achievement is low, shockingly low in many cases, and I'll address that a little bit later, I hope. But what Danny is, is deeply concerned and deeply committed about this. He's traveling to state. He's meeting with people. People are talking to him. Why would I be such a supporter of Danny other than we agree on opinions? Well, I know Danny. He's a friend. I know his heart. He's been a man that has spent 30 years in business in this town with probably thousands of people who have gone through the education system in Leavenworth and in this state. I'm startled by the number of those people that greet him warmly and thank him for all that he had done for them, to encourage them as they came to work for him and continued their education in the workplace. He is, okay, I've got the time there. Parents in charge call him a tiger, a tiger who will not bend to the status quo, and I know Danny has a tiger, and I think many of you know him as a tiger. The other thing, though, I know about him is deeply humble. He knows what he doesn't know. He recognizes mistakes he's made in life. He has changed in many ways, and he is a remarkable man, in my opinion. And so I think this is the guy that's going to study. He's going to ask questions. He's going to learn from people, and he has learned a lot and he has a lot to offer. So look for Danny Zack.[960.44][960.44][applause]
All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right, first question. First, I've got to get my glasses.
You can stay there, Ted, if you want me to. I'll just swing the camera around.
Okay, gentlemen, let me assert that in a healthy community, there is mutual respect for dedicated professional teachers and concerned, supportive parents with the ultimate right and responsibility for their children. Do you agree with this statement? Based on the degree or level of your agreement, how will you foster mutual respect as a State Board of Education member? Mr. Howard, you have two minutes.
First, let me clarify. I am running at state level for the State Board of Education, not a local school board. I have been attending every single Board of Education meeting in Topeka so I can stay up to date on what is happening at state level and meeting with the first-level-down superintendents across the district, because that is the emphasis for this position. School boards are local level. Board of Education is state level. I am the approved and recommended candidate by KNEA as far as working with educators. I am the approved candidate for the Leavenworth NEA. I have met with local educators. I have met with the Kansas Association of School Boards. I have met with parents and teachers. We need to work as a team, team, and that's why the Parents as Teachers program, which I messed up last week, is so important, to get parents involved at early age, working with their children. Parents need to be involved. They have a right to be involved in their children's education. They have a right to say what their child learns and how their child is educated, but not all children across the board. Teachers are teachers for a reason. They need to be respected for who they are, what they are, and what it took for them to get to where they are. So parents and teachers need to work as a team for the benefit of the children so to get the children better prepared for success upon graduation.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you. I'm going to stand up, please. I appreciate the question, and I want to acknowledge one thing you said. Based, do you agree with this statement about education and respect? But it says, "Supportive parents with the ultimate right."
Ultimate, yes.
Supportive parents with the ultimate responsibility for their children. That is a point that Danny Zack will agree with wholeheartedly. Mutual respect between all the partners, obviously, in the education system, because they do need to be a team. Ultimate responsibility is a parent. The parent raised those kids, has taught them before they got into whatever their current class is, teaches them in the evenings and in the mornings before they go there, teaches them on the weekends, and monitors their teaching as it goes through, hopefully, as they're going through the classroom schedule. So I think that's very important, and our schools are essential. They're essential support systems for the parents to raise their children and prepare them for adulthood, citizenship, and family life. And that is very strongly the opinion of Danny Zack, of course, myself too, where I would be here. So I think I totally agree that he's committed to enhancing the relationship so it's effective, so there is transparency in the relationship between parent, school board, and school administration and teachers, so that it is accountable for the responsibility that each of the delegated responsibility, each one of those have. And he's very committed to that. He's very supportive of teachers. He's very, very supportive of Boards of Education or school boards, to be grammatically correct.
Why don't you stand right there if you're going to take?
I am. Okay, I'll do that.
Then you'll be the question for the second question. Second question. What specific actions will you take to ensure that public schools offer academic programs and extracurricular activities that students need to mature into well-informed, productive, and compassionate citizens? Two minutes, sir.
Okay, there's a number of things that Danny is going to take. I'm taking none of them, by the way, other than this support. He is going to insist on transparency, not transparency where you have to go search and search and search through 14 different labels or levels to get to it, but transparency of what is going on, what is being taught, and clarity in the way that is there. And then accountability. He is going to insist at the state school board level that the curricula that is provided, that is directed in some cases, that the materials that are there are transparent about what is in them, what they are for, and that there are objective measures to weigh them and provide options to the local school boards instead of a single recommendation. He's going to limit the restrictions or the constraints that the state school board puts on the local school district. He is going to make sure that there's a limit on the conditional funding that there is not now, and get this local school board more power to oversee, superintend their schools. He probably is going to call for an audit of the state school board to see where these $16,000 per student, where that is going. So that's what Danny, those are some of the steps that Danny will take.
Thank you so much. Mr. Howard, do you want the, want me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
What specific actions will you take to ensure public schools offer academic programs and extracurricular activities that students need to mature into well-informed, productive, compassionate citizens?
Once again, clarification. The position is a state-level position overseeing the school districts and sending guidance down to the superintendents for the school districts. The local school boards are a different entity, and they have different responsibilities at local level. The state establishes a curriculum and a level of credits that are required for graduation. The individual school districts and schools at local level establish actual graduation requirements and what is offered at their schools. State Board of Education does not dictate to individual schools. We send guidance down, or they send guidance down to the school districts and to the superintendents, such as the title line where equal spending of money for all students, male and female. The Board of Education will insist on equal opportunity for all students regardless of race, creed, color, sexual orientation. The transparency issue is not an issue. The $16,000, again, is local level. If you want to audit, you're going to audit at local level. That is local superintendent, local principals, local schools, and it is not a Board of Education issue. At Board of Education, we're dealing with hundreds of millions of dollars being allocated down to school districts. So it is important to understand the difference between state level and local level in the organization and the management of education for the children. Thank you.
Sir? All right, Ron Grossman. I just have a couple of questions really for Mr. Howard. My questions pertain to a couple of in-
Please get to your question.
Pertain to a couple of incidents that happened.
Your question, please.
Well, two questions, but I think I need a little-
Question? No, what's your question?
After having me removed from the town hall by the police, Officer Bowles in Lansing Police reporting-
Please answer the question.
... 234, how can I, or how can any Republican respect you or expect you to represent us after treating a Republican like that, and after? And the next question is why?
All right, is that your question?
No, my second question.
No, one question, please.
Well, my question is, how can you represent me when you disrespect me, and then when you tell the police that the senator who's sitting right here doesn't have a right to invite you?
All right, please. Yes, your question, Mr. Howard.
Well, the question is, how can we get you to represent us when you treat us as such a-
We had the same question last week by the same individual, and the issue we came last week is, is this a question directed at one individual, or is this a question for the forum on Board of Education? And this is a personal issue that this gentleman has. I will refrain from responding to it this time. Thank you.
Okay.
Would you like to respond to his personal question?
No, one national.
I have a question for you guys. Do you believe parents have the right to be in the classroom observing as the educational process is taking place?
Mr. Schmidt, would you start?
Yeah, I think on a normal basis, absolutely. I can imagine why that wouldn't be appropriate and in some cases necessary. The parent, as I said, has the ultimate responsibility for the child's education. That includes what goes on in the classroom. Now, hopefully, parents will go in and respect the order in the classroom and respect the teacher's position, and will address issues privately, but absolutely, I think they do have a right.
I agree with Mr. Schmidt 100 percent. A parent has a responsibility to their child and to the child's education, and I have no problem with a parent sitting in a classroom and observing, and then talking respectfully, one-on-one with the teacher if there's an issue afterwards, and not disrupting the classroom. I agree 100 percent with Mr. Schmidt's response. Parents have options right now. They have rights in the Kansas education system. If a parent doesn't like the, I'm going to pick on you, sir, because you're sitting in front. If you don't like the book your child's assigned to read, you as a parent have the option to say, "I want my child to be assigned a different book." And if you say, "I don't like this lesson my child's being assigned," you as the parent have the right to say, "I want my child to be assigned a different lesson." And if you say, "I don't like this school or this school district," you have the right to take your child out of the school, out of the school district, and enroll them in another school or school district if there's room. Parents have certain rights already, and sitting in the classroom, observing that classroom is part of those rights. I have no problem with that whatsoever.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, question.
My name is Paul Hahn, and, you know, I think the school education system is going the wrong direction. You've pushed so hard to work, everyone needing to go to college.
What's your question?
My question is, what are you going to do? Are you wanting to change some of the direction that the schools are going, i.e., we need to be pushing more for trade schools and for kids that want to take Andy Zack, do not want to go to college?
Thank you, sir.
Do you go along with that?
Thank you. Mr. Howard?
Sir, I did a six-year apprenticeship myself in a shipyard. I fully concur. Some children are better suited and desire a trade, and that is something that is being pushed at Board of Education level, and recruiting teachers, qualifying instructors at trade level, even with the battery-
teachers, qualifying instructors at trade level, even with the battery plant coming to Soto. Down the road, they're going to need to replace their skilled workers, and they're going to need trade instructions, yes. And other students want to continue higher education, and they will need the STEM training. We need the different tracks to prepare the children, whether they want to go to higher education, whether they want to go to trade school vocational, off to the military. And some of them may have listened in English literature, and they want to follow Jack Kerouac and just go on the road. Either way, any of those four options or other options, it is responsibility of parents and educators together to identify where that child is doing, where they want to head. And to do their utmost to prepare them for that. We cannot have every single trade represented, but there are trade schools, such as KCK, where we can prepare the child to go to that school and enter into that pathway. So yes, schools need to look at all the options facing the child, whether it be highly tactical, where they need the STEM training, or be vocational. I agree, sir, they need the multiple pathways prepared for them.
Certainly. Our schools are here to prepare our kids to be career and college ready. Some are not going to college, they are going into a career. The candidate I support, Danny Zech, went into a career and made a very good life of that for himself and thousands of others that he employed. So yes, but we're failing in that. That's the problem. The percentages in Kansas of those who are college and career-ready range from 60% graduating on the number one school in Kansas, down to barely 10%, which is one of the last schools in Kansas and happens to be Leavenworth in that. And kids who go in trade need to know basic math. They need to know basic, how to read. They need to, today, they need to learn how to handle a computer. They need to know something about history so we don't continue to make the same mistakes we've made throughout history. So I have a grandson who is in the, in the effort. I have a granddaughter who went to a trade school. I have two grandchildren who are in college. And I think schools are designed to prepare them for that. But they do need to prepare them, and they need to prepare them in the core subjects that we ask our, our schools to prepare kids for, in the core subjects of math, English, reading, science, history, and those sorts of things. So they are ready to go to a trade school, so they are ready to go straight into the workforce.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's get down to the nitty-gritty. Where does each of the candidates stand on CRT and social-emotional learning?
Thank you.
Social-emotional learning has been a thief. It purports itself to be there to teach kids self-control, self-discipline, self-esteem, conflict management, there's other things, but some of them slip my mind. It has infiltrated all of the courses in the school. It, it is embedded with trendy, jazzy, current social issues that are being debated in our country. And in many cases, conflicts with parents' values. It attempts to teach values and attempts to teach behavior, behavioral things that are beyond the common behavioral things of respect and discipline and things like that. It has stolen multiple hours since the insertion of SEL, social-emotional learning. We have seen scores, achievement scores, go down. They haven't gone up. And so our kids are less ready for careers, for trade schools, for college. It has been, and in fact is affected as you look deeply, and that has been looked at. And one of our school board members here is very, very good at looking at it. It's been affected deeply by some very questionable sources in a way that impact negatively on the standards and the values of parents and families in our community.
Mr. Howard, please.
Well, this time I say I disagree 100%. First of all, we can throw statistics out left and right depending on what survey you read and who prepares it. If you want, I attend the board of education meetings every month. I listen to Commissioner Watson. I watch his briefings every month on the statistics statewide. The goal is 90% graduation rate. We're not there. But have they been increasing every year, over five-year increments? Yes. If you want to see the real facts, not from me, not from this gentleman, go to the board of education website. There's a tab called Data Central. You can pull up the data yourselves and see the actual data, see the incremental increase in graduation rates, see the incremental decrease in drop-off rates. Schools are successful. CRT. CRT is a fancy name for history. History happens. As simple as that. Simple as that. Does everybody agree with what people did? No. Do we take George Washington off our dollar bills because he owned slaves? No. Do we acknowledge owning slavery was wrong? Yes. History happened. We learn notches of it, we need to learn from it, and the students need to learn that. Social-emotional learning is critical. We just had a 16-year-old shoot up the city in Raleigh, a 15-year-old. He didn't know how to express himself, so he went up, grabbed a rifle, and shot up the community. SEL is taught incrementally throughout the grades, so the children learn how to handle themselves. So you don't see a kid in the grocery store laying on the floor throwing a fit and yelling and screaming. They learn how to express themselves in a better manner, all the way up through high school, how to handle conflict. And also, for businessmen, how to handle a customer, customer service, not to get in someone's face. It is critical that people learn how to handle their emotions. Thank you.
First off, I want to thank Mr. Schmidt, obviously not Mr. Zech, because Mr. Zech wasn't at the area or wherever he is, I'm sorry, Manhattan, almost here, but you're very articulate, so appreciate you stepping in. It is unusual in our format, but thank you so much. With that, I get to my question. We have teachers who are fleeing, and I'm not going to say fleeing, who have left Kansas or leaving the position, they've left over the last three years. In general, we have-
What's the question, sir?
Okay, positions like gifted and paras, how do we attract teachers? It seems as though there's not a focus on that. How do we do that in here, given?
Well, obviously, teachers have to have a, the teachers we want to attract have to have talent in some subject that they're going to teach, and they have to have a desire to be a teacher. And that carries with it certain difficulties. And some of that is dealing with people like parents and with misbehaving children. Some of that is not the greatest wage. We certainly could increase wages to teachers, but that might not mean increase the funding, or it may, but we can, we can do that. But I think the best thing we can do for teachers is honor them for the subjects that they teach, encourage them to teach those subjects well, and to continue to improve their skills in those subjects, and fulfill their own personal desire in that subject of passing out on to the next generation. The infusion of some of this other stuff that we're forcing them to do, which they probably are fully capable of doing without mandating, and by the way, the state does mandate social-emotional learning, so the state board does have a role in that, a very significant role. And in fact, they offer the types of curricula that can be chosen from, but those sorts of things are not helping the teachers. Many of the teachers that I have met with in going around with Danny Zech have left teaching because of what they see of its total, the abominable requirements that violate their own personal principles and that limit what they can teach in the core subjects.
Mr. Howard?
Well, I partially agree. Recruiting teachers, we need to go out to schools that produce teachers, recruiting teachers, improve working environment, pay, benefits, working conditions, class size. We're caught in a loop right now. Every time a teacher leaves because of pressure put on them by parental groups, by additional requirements put on them, it multiplies. You lose a teacher, someone's got to pick up the load, and then they become frustrated. Improving working conditions, improving relationships with parents. But it is not, the teachers are not complaining about what types of lessons they have to teach. Teachers enjoy teaching. That is their profession. I have not heard that anywhere, any school district, any teachers, that we don't like what we're being told to teach. That's their profession. SEL, the teachers have to deal with the kids who act out. The teachers have no problem with SEL because they are the ones on the front lines. The question becomes, by many people, why aren't the parents doing this? Many times the parents are not knowledgeable on how to do it. Part of the, the parents' teachers' program is to work at the lower levels to prepare the kids for this. So yes, it's a combination of pay, benefits, working conditions, interactions with the parents, and listening to the teachers. What is, what is their problems? And this is, again, at the lower level, but if we want to maintain teachers, we've got to keep them at the lower level. So listen to the teachers and listen to the parents, again, talking to each other to improve the conditions altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last question back here.
I'm Mike Barnum, I'm a school board here. I'd like to have-
It's by the machine.
Is the machine working?
Yes.
It's working.
It's on.
Okay. Still Mike Barney, still on the school board. Here's a question for Mr. Zech via Schmidt. Tell me specifically, which classroom in our school district is critical race theory being taught?
Which classroom is being taught throughout the curriculum? It is embedded in all of the curriculum, math, English, phys ed, history. It's being infused in all of the curriculum in our classrooms. And by the way, critical race theory for some of the things that it is purported to, not critical race theory, are you talking about critical race theory?
The FED.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was, I was talking about social-emotional learning. However, the social-emotional learning, that curriculum that Leavenworth has chosen, I was at the school board meeting when it was, when it was chosen, that thing has been, was influenced largely by the 1619 Project. It was influenced by the Planned Parenthood. They all had input into that. And, and for all of the things that it's purported to do over the last 10 years, including dealing with, with children's safety, personal safety, suicides have risen 400% in 10 years. The statistics I gave you came from the Kansas State Board of Education, the KSDE, Kansas State Department of Education. And Leavenworth, which I'm sad to say, this is, this is very unfortunate, three miles that way is the number one school in the state in achievement, three miles that way is the number 94 school district in the state, and right here in Leavenworth, out of 200 and, 278, no, 286 school districts in Kansas, here in Leavenworth, we're 258, 278, eight from the bottom, using social-emotional learning. You cannot find the word CRT, you're correct, in the social-emotional learning. It is embedded in it.
Those points were not answered in the question. You're welcome.
Mr. Curriculum Transition.
Well, sir, once again, I've said it a couple times, I've been attending the state board of education meetings every month, following all their actions, and they have made public announcements many times. CRT has not been taught in our schools, is not being taught in our schools, it will not be taught in our schools. It's as simple as that. That is state policy. Are there role teachers who possibly may have mentioned something that could have been considered CRT? Potentially. As a role teacher, might have said something about communism, potentially. Because any teacher could have said anything at any time, potentially, but it is not part of the curriculum. It is not being taught. History is being taught, and again, we need not learn just of history, but from history. Local history, state history, national history, international history, so we don't repeat the mistakes that have been made before.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you both for supporting the board of education. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Can we close?
Do you want to recharge your coffees?
Can we close?
Can they have a closing?
Oh, closing, all right. Yeah. I just want to move on.
And how many minutes till closing?
One minute. One minute, okay, one minute. Again, I am Jeff Howard, I'm running for the state board of education, not a local school board, and I have a candidate endorsed at state level, a KNEA, at local level, a Level 1 NEA. I've been interviewed many times by TV and local newspapers. Those responses are available publicly, they're out there online for you. And I would encourage you all, especially educators, I say educators, educate thyself. Before you vote, educate yourselves on the two candidates. Make an educated decision. This is not just your life we're talking about, it's the lives of your children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Well, I'm done, Danny Zech, and it is Danny Zech who's running for the state board of education, which has a tremendous influence on what the local school board receives, can receive, and has mandated for them. And so that's why he's running, to help out the local school boards by operating at the state board of education level. I will end with something that Danny tends to end with, and that is that when you see your ballot, two Tuesdays, three Tuesdays from now, two Tuesdays from now, you're going to see the state board of education as the last item on the ballot. Folks, our kids depend on it, and you don't make them last when you, when you vote. Thank you.
All right, you want to recharge your cups? We're going to be taking you over real quick.